Buenas tardes. El Distrito Escolar Unificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico, seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno. I'm sorry. Uno. Tres uno nueve. Tres ocho dos. Nueve seis siete seis. Por favor, entonce la clave. Seis seis cinco. Nueve nueve seis. Nueve siete seis. Seguido de la tecla numeral. Can't understand please. Thank you.
Thank you. 多谢你。Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the translation services vice president.
Thanks, Justin. I think we have forums, so we're going to go ahead and.
Recording in progress.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special meeting for tonight. Tonight, we have one agenda item. And that's superintendent's resolution to extend the interim Lowell admissions policy for the 2022-2023 school year. But before that, you know, I just want to welcome the public, welcome to staff. Appreciate all the work that's gone into this from the superintendent and his team. And I think before we move forward, we have to go to item number one, which is motion to suspend board rule and procedure nine three two three. Is Miss Hope on line?
I am on the line. I think though, did you do a roll call before I hopped on?
I did it in my head. I did it in my head. Let's go ahead and do it. Go ahead, Justin.
Right. All right. Commissioner Alexander?
Here.
Commissioner Bogus?
Here.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Maliga?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go ahead and move to item number one. It's a motion to suspend board rule and procedure nine three two three. Can I get a sec? A motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And then can we get a roll call on this item, please?
Yes. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Maliga?
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and go into our agenda item for discussion. Superintendent's resolution to extend the interim Lowell admissions policy for the 2022-2023 school year. Superintendent Matthews, you have a staff who's going to be able to present on this item.
Yes, I am actually going to present tonight. Good evening, members of the public. Good evening, President Lopez, Vice President Maligo, commissioners, staff members present. So as you just said, this item is my resolution to extend the interim Lowell admissions policy for the 22-23 school year. There are four areas I'm going to cover tonight. There isn't a deck to present, but I'm just going to talk to you tonight about four areas. First, I'm going to give, talk about number one, the brief background on the Lowell admissions policy, so we all understand what it has been every year except the current year. The second point I'd like to talk about is why we suspended the Lowell admissions policy for this current year. My third point is the rationale for suspension for next year. And then finally, I want to conclude with what my recommendation is to the board. So first, background on the current admissions are the, I'm sorry, on the Lowell admissions policy. That policy is titled fifty-one twenty point one, but for for this presentation tonight or before my talk to you, I'm just going to say fifty-one twenty. Except for this school year, admission to Lowell High School has been different from the admission process for all other district high schools. In previous years, the application and admission process has been set forth in board policy fifty-one twenty. What is in that policy, the policy that had been in place before this year, required a student seeking admittance to Lowell to submit the following. Number one, a Lowell application. Two, a personal statement. Three, sealed transcripts with grades from the entire seventh grade and the first semester of eighth grade. Four standardized test scores. Board policy fifty-one twenty also set forth three different qualification method bands for admission, all of which requires students to meet certain academic criteria. In order to administer that process set forth in fifty-one twenty, staff collects transcripts from all eligible applicants from over a hundred public and private schools, middle schools. They administer a Lowell admissions test, review those personal statements of applicants, analyze transcripts and standardized test scores, and facilitates a district-level Lowell admissions committee to review non-academic criteria such as principal recommendations. In addition to these steps, middle school principals and other school staff actively supported their students with the preparation and submission of materials needed for the application. This process is very labor-intensive, and it requires approximately three months after the submission of the deadline to process. Accordingly, under policy fifty-one twenty, the application window for Lowell opens in early October and closes in mid-December, a month to six weeks earlier than the deadline for all other high schools. In contrast to the Lowell admissions policy, board policy fifty-one oh one, which prescribes the student assignment policy for the other district comprehensive high school admissions, contains no required academic criteria, no personal statement, or a recommendation from principals. Board policy fifty-one oh one assigns students to comprehensive high schools using a process that considers the applicant's ranked preferences and other factors, including whether the applicant has an older sibling in the high school, the applicant student graduated from Willie Brown Junior Middle School and were enrolled in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, and/or applicant lives in the designated census tract in San Francisco. The application process under board policy fifty-one oh one opened to students October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one for the twenty-two-two-three admission cycle. And as you can hear, very much less labor-intensive, requires fewer resources, and takes far less time to administer than the Lowell admissions policy. So number two, why the suspension of fifty-one twenty for this school year, for the twenty-one-two school year? As we all know, on March sixteenth, we ceased face-to-face instruction in response to the declaration of a health emergency due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. District schools closed for all students for the remainder of the school year, and for most students closed for the entirety of the twenty-two-two-three school year. On March eighteenth, twenty-twenty, Governor Gavin Newsom issued an executive order to suspend the state's smarter balance standardized tests for students for students in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. On April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, the Board of Education adopted an alternative grading system for spring twenty-twenty, which changed the grading procedure from letter grades to credit, no credit. As a result of the suspension of standardized testing and the implementation of the alternative grading system, the district determined that the process for Lowell admissions could not be implemented as required by board policy fifty-one twenty. As a result of these factors, on October twentieth, twenty-twenty, the Board of Education approved my resolution to adopt an interim Lowell admission policy for the twenty-one-two school year, our current school year. This resolution suspended board policy fifty-one twenty for this school year and provided that the admissions requirements for all comprehensive high schools is set forth in board policy fifty-one oh one would also apply to Lowell. During the twenty-two-one-two school year, when the comprehensive high school admissions policy was used to assign students to Lowell, the number of applicants to Lowell rose by nearly a thousand students. Additionally, more students attended public school, applied to Lowell in twenty-two-one-two than in prior years, and the applicant pool was far more diverse than in prior years. More black and Latinx students enrolled in Lowell's ninth-grade class than ever before. And while still maintaining a small percentage of the overall population, the number of incoming ninth-grade black students enrolled at Lowell increased by seventy-seven percent over their tenth-grade peers, and the number of ninth-grade Latinx students increased by sixty-six percent over their tenth-grade peers. Latinx and African-American students now make up one-fourth of Lowell's incoming ninth-grade enrollment, with significant increases for Latinx students. And when we think of program factors, English learner students, our special ed students, our Lowell SES students, homeless students also saw positive increases in their representation amongst Lowell's incoming ninth-grade enrollment. It is important to note, though, that Asian students continue to make up over forty percent of Lowell's incoming ninth-grade enrollment. One of our five core values is we are diversity-driven, and this policy or this change or this suspension definitely increased the diversity of Lowell's ninth-grade class. On February ninth, twenty-twenty-one, in response to concerns about ongoing systemic racism at Lowell, the Board of Education approved resolution two-one-two dash two A one that applied the same emissions policy used for all district comprehensive high schools to Lowell High School for the twenty-one-two school year and beyond. Resolution twenty-two-one-two dash two A one has been the subject of litigation in the San Francisco Superior Court, and on November seventeenth, a San Francisco Superior Court judge ordered the board to set aside resolution two-one-two dash two A one within thirty days. The court found that although the board placed resolution two-one-two-two-one A one on the board agenda for action, and the board provided a copy of the resolution, it nevertheless failed to provide adequate notice that it intended to change the Lowell admissions policy. However, in the same order, the court noted and explained that the board could cure and correct this procedural error by placing the resolution on a board agenda with proper notice. On December seventh, twenty-twenty-one, the board took action to rescind resolution two-one-two-two A one in compliance with the court's order, and the rescission of this resolution, two-one-two dash two A one, basically, if nothing is done, will result in the restoration of the Lowell admissions policy fifty-one twenty. Number three, which is the rationale for the suspension of that policy for the twenty-two-two-three school year. Implementation of the Lowell admissions policy for the upcoming school year, twenty-two-two-three, is logistically impossible, which is the heart of why I'm recommending students who live in San Francisco and wish to apply to Lowell High School will not be subject to the mission requirements of board policy fifty-one twenty, and will use the same application form used for all district comprehensive high schools for the twenty-two-two-three school year. Since preparation for the twenty-two-two-three school year admissions began in April of twenty-one, resolution two-one-two-two A one was then in effect. School enrollment and application materials, the online application, the enrollment guide, and informational flyers all described Lowell High School as a comprehensive high school without academic eligibility criteria. All enrollment and application materials were created in an accessible online format and in print form and translated into six languages. Since the school assignment process for the twenty-two-two-three school year opened on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, with Lowell High School being identified as one of the high school options to which any incoming ninth-grader can apply, from October twenty-second through November eighteen, the district conducted enrollment workshops from those dates, the twenty-second of October to the eighteenth of November, to support families choosing and applying for schools. All of the virtual and live presentations describe Lowell as a comprehensive high school without academic eligibility criteria. On October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, families begin submitting their high school choice rankings for the twenty-two-two-three school year through the online or paper application. Altering the course of the twenty-two-two-three school year application process after it has been launched would create significant confusion and anxiety for families who made school choices both for their children's current enrollment and future enrollment based on an understanding that Lowell High School would not have academic admissions criteria going forward. This kind of change would significantly interrupt families' transportation, work, and childcare planning. Much of the institutional knowledge in the district among families and at schools throughout the city regarding the Lowell admissions policy has been diminished since the district last implemented the policy in the fall of twenty-eighteen. Since that time, families and staff have had to pivot to providing and receiving distance learning and now providing in-person education with new health and safety protocols in place. In light of these circumstances, providing the clarity and support needed to reinstate the Lowell admissions policy would require the investment of significant financial and human resources at a time when the district is in qualified financial status and facing a substantial budget deficit of more than one hundred million dollars. Also, keep in mind that rebuilding the infrastructure to support the Lowell admissions process for the twenty-two-two-three school year to comply with board policy fifty-one twenty would take at least six weeks and possibly longer. Rebuilding the infrastructure includes developing, translating, and implementing the academic criteria for paper, in-person, and online consumption, and rewriting and reproducing the twenty-two-two-three enrollment guide and enrollment materials in multiple languages on multiple platforms, after which time families, students, and their principals and teachers would need another six weeks to understand the process and to complete and submit an application that includes personal statements from students, recommendations from principals, and sealed transcripts. Based on all that I've said, the earliest an application deadline could be set would be late February or early March. Then, the district would need to begin collecting transcripts from over one hundred middle schools, administering a Lowell admissions test, reviewing personal statements, analyzing transcripts and standardized test scores, and facilitating the Lowell admissions committee. As described above, the district requires approximately three months after the submission deadline to process applications and make assignment offers. Thus, the earliest students and families would receive an assignment letter would be sometime in May. I know that delaying assignment offers until May would result in an unacceptable burden for students and families. The district issues school assignment letters to families in mid-March because it aligns with the same timeline that private high schools in the area issue their acceptance letters and allow students full participation in the choice system for all other district comprehensive high schools. Delaying assignment letters until May would result in substantial negative impacts to the district's budgeting process. The district's budget, school staffing decisions, and twenty-two-two-three course schedules are developed in March based on school assignment and student enrollment. It is therefore critical to district operations that the district make school assignments in mid-March. Were the Lowell admissions policy to be reinstated for the twenty-two-two-three school year, many applicants would lack some of the academic criteria required by the policy to assess their applications. For example, due to the ongoing COVID pandemic, not all students received letter grades during the twenty-two-one school year. In addition, the district exercised its right to forego administration of the ASBAC in the spring of twenty-twenty-one, and our students, therefore, do not have test scores to submit as required by the Lowell admissions policy. And finally, number four, my recommendation to the board for the next school year. Number one, I'm asking that the board also find that it's logistically impossible and financially infeasible to implement board policy fifty-one twenty, which is the Lowell admissions policy, for the twenty-two-two-three school year. Therefore, for the twenty-two-two-three school year, students who live in San Francisco and wish to apply to Lowell High School will not be subject to the admissions requirement of the board policy fifty-one twenty and will use the same application form used for all district comprehensive high schools and have the opportunity to be assigned to Lowell High School pursuant to board policy fifty-one oh one, effectively extending the interim Lowell admissions policy for an additional school year. I will amend, finally, the Lowell High School admissions board policy fifty-one twenty consistent with this resolution. And that ends my presentation this evening, Vice President Maligo.
Thank you, Superintendent Matthews. We're going to go ahead and open this up for public comments. I know this is a topic that is important to many here in our city, and so we want to be able to give ample time for folks to be able to comment tonight. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to open it up for a forty-five-minute public comment. And you know, whether the time is used up or underused, you know, we will see what happens. If there are more hands or more folks who would like to comment beyond the forty-five minutes, I'll make a decision then to extend time. But that's going to be our format tonight, and then we'll jump into a discussion amongst our colleagues and student delegates if they're here. Justin, can you go ahead and see if we have any public comments on this item?
Sure thing. So forty-five minutes total, one minute each?
One minute each.
Great. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the policy being introduced or suspended, excuse me. Could that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas tardes. Por favor, levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público con relación a la suspensión de esta enmienda. Se va a dar un total de cuarenta y cinco minutos con un minuto por persona. Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Larry?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Larry Lee. I am in favor of merit-based education at Lowell, in addition to raising all the other high schools. Because the only way that less privileged or less wealthy can get ahead and compete with the privilege and wealthiness by having a merit-based public school like Lowell. I'm talking about people who can't afford private school. Who said just because you attend public school automatically means that you have to automatically settle for a second-rate education? I find that to be very insulting. Free public school education doesn't have to mean second-rate education. Now, free doesn't mean second-rate. Besides, it is not free because I pay for it with my taxes. Unless the school board is afraid to have more intelligent people or students in San Francisco because they are harder to control, and therefore, they can't implement their political agenda over their educational agenda. Again, this is Larry Lee. Thank you very much, and have a great day. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Hello, Christine?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hello. Right now, twelve thousand letters have been sent to elected leaders asking that this matter be postponed and that Barrett admissions be reimposed at Lowell High School. You have a proposal submitted by Carol Kosovar, who was the SFUSD's expert who put in recommendations for the Lowell admissions policy in two thousand and one. It is far more equitable because it would require the SFUSD to send admissions letters to all students without having them put in an application to Lowell High School based on their sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade grades that were not earned during the pandemic. We believe that a full analysis needs to be done also of the DF rates accrued during the lottery admissions for the fall semester at Lowell High School, as well as the remedial math and English classes that now need to be offered. We need a full understanding of what also needs to be done to support our wonderful students, all of them, from all races and backgrounds that are now have been admitted at Lowell under the lottery. We believe that there are several other potential equitable and meritable resolutions that can be easily implemented and not used rule five-one-two oh one point one. Where's the analysis on that? We've heard absolutely nothing on that tonight, and you cannot vote until you have that information. Why not wait three weeks until you have the information that you need? It's twenty-one days. Please.
Hello, Supriya?
Hi, thank you for taking my call. I want to comment here on the process, not the substance, of the Lowell admissions policy. I think there are people with very important points on both sides of this debate. And had there been an opportunity, but the board had an opportunity and an obligation to provide proper public comment when this came up to begin with. And unfortunately, it shortcut the process, and the court found that it acted improperly as a result of what it did. These actions are all increasing division and decreasing trust. The board should be holding itself to the highest standards and modeling legality and taking seriously the community input process when it operates. If students, for instance, are looking at this and thinking about what the board has done and what the district is doing, they must be disturbed in so many respects because they're expected to be accountable. They're expected to follow rules. The board should be doing that, too. They've had plenty of notice here and violated basic laws and processes. It's just, it's not a good example. The board needs to be operating in a fairer way to everybody. Thank you.
Hello, Mark?
Thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate your time. Mark Scholler here, class eighty-five from Lowell. My daughter Anna is a sophomore at Lowell now, being blessed with this good education. One of the reasons I came back to the city in two thousand and eight was to, if my daughters merited, to send them to Lowell. I've been blessed from this education, and I want my daughters to be blessed from it as well. And like many others, if the school board does not keep up the academic excellence of San Francisco Unified, I may move out as well, and I don't, I don't want to. Appreciate your time. Thank you for your consideration.
Hello, Rianda?
Good evening, Superintendent Matthews and board commissioners. My name is Rianda Batiste, and I am one of the APEC parent leads. And I'm here tonight as a parent to strongly suggest and support the resolution of having the process suspended for enrollment. Our babies are brilliant, and brilliance does not have a color. Brilliance does not have any other makeup, other than just being brilliant. Having our babies attend Lowell does not dumb down the education, and that's our black and our brown babies. The remedial classes aren't there just because the black and brown babies are going. And so that whole narrative needs to be debunked. Our babies have a right to equality education across the district. Lowell should not be admission-based, and it never should have been. We need to right the wrong and continue with the process. Thank you.
Thank you. It says C K O C I V A R.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Hi, I'm Carol Kosovar. I chaired the task force years ago on Lowell admissions, trying to find a middle ground so that all of us can be proud of this high school in San Francisco. I've submitted a proposal that I think is easy to implement, is cost-effective, and can be done in a timely way. And I'm doing it because I have such respect and gratitude to the San Francisco School District that I hate to see us torn apart by this issue where I believe there can be a middle ground where we have both excellence and equity, and I believe all children can be successful. And so I would hope that you look at that proposal, which is really offered as a way to get through a controversial issue that all children can win on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Ronald? Ronald?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry.
I speak in defense of Lowell not having a special admissions policy. My name is Ronald Cruz. I'm a son of Filipino immigrants, born and raised in SF. I'm part of Lowell's class of ninety-five. I'm now a lawyer and organizer with the Coalition to Defend Affirmative Action, Integration, and Immigrant Rights, and Fight Free Equality by Any Means Necessary, or BAM. We, as a city, must fight to realize the promise of Brown v. Board of Education, and separate is inherently unequal. And it's clear, more than ever, due to Trump and the rise of the far-right, that where our society goes on race decides whether we stay a democracy. I'm here as one of many thousands of Asian-Americans in this city who refuse to be held up as a model minority, to be used in divide-and-conquer games of the far-right. I stand with millions of immigrants who marched in two thousand and six, the Black Lives Matter movement, and this new integrated civil rights movement, which is what can improve our lives and change everything. We do not accept scraps. We shouldn't have a district where there's only one school where the district feels obligated to prepare kids for elite colleges. Meritocracy is a myth, and I, the old admissions criteria necessitates believing in the inferiority of Black, Latino, Latino, and other minorities.
Thank you.
Is false and racist. And instead of its ruling current culture, it can be a better school and offer superior education by looking like the city. Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Marshall?
Hi, thank you so much, Mrs. Steele. Virginia Marshall, on behalf of the NWA CP, the Alliance of Black School Educators, we are so appreciative of Superintendent Matthews' proposal. We wholeheartedly support the proposal. It is fair. It seems to me, on a personal level, that everyone in, in San Francisco should want every child to have a great education, not just one ethnic group. I keep saying, and I'll say it again tonight, Lowell High School is a public school. It is not just for one ethnic group to be their private, their pub, their private school on taxpayer dollars, dollars. Please support Superintendent Matthews' amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Justin?
Yes, I'd just like to say San Francisco has led for forty years the nation in having assemblies nearly eliminating previously common problems such as sexual and racial harassment, gay bashing, slut shaming, bullying, and teen pregnancy by over eighty percent. Virtually no kids of any ethnic group who study over fifteen hours a week end up in poverty, homeless, imprisoned, or on welfare. Let's put all our energy in reducing to zero the number of kids who don't study fifteen hours a week. Studying is a choice, and not all groups currently study equal hours, which is a choice. It's not nineteen oh five with kids in, uh, coal mines or fields or factories. They're spending forty hours a week on average on TV, games, and social media. Every group that studies twelve hours a week plus has eliminated poverty, crime, prison, homelessness, and welfare from over seventy racially diverse nations, including thirty African nations. San Francisco has the lowest Black and Latino test scores, and if you could get everybody studying fifteen hours a week, you could have them, uh, you could have a diverse group getting into Lowell from achievement, not luck, and keep Lowell great, and help Black and Latino people advance and make the upper-middle class. All of your choice.
Thank you. That's a four-one-five-five-one-seven phone number? Caller with the four-one-five-five-one-seven?
Hello?
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 Yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, this is, this is Louise Whitlock. Uh, four weeks ago today, Superior Court Ethan, uh, Ethan Schulman ruled that you violated Californian law and how you went about abolishing merit-based admissions at Lowell High School. And thus currently, the only legitimate policy is the original merit-based admissions or some version of it. You failed to show the, failed to follow the judge's order, showing extreme bad faith once again. Instead, you've chosen to run out the clock and not follow the judge's orders. You have plenty of time. You have an excellent proposal from Carol Kosovar, Lowell's former merit-based admissions expert, for how to implement a fair and diverse merit-based admissions policy for next year. You continue to harm Lowell and this school district with your prejudice and discrimination against Asian-American and white students at Lowell. I was shocked tonight to hear Superintendent Matthews admit that he and the Board of Education changed Lowell's policy, admissions policy, to specifically favor some races over other races, and that is blatantly illegal under California law, specifically Prop sixteen and two oh nine. Please stop discriminating and stop breaking the law.
Hello, Jan?
Hi, it's actually Isabel Wade as Jan Chernoff's Zoom. I am strongly in favor of merit-based Lowell admissions. Um, as we've heard tonight, this debate has actually gone on for some time. What has the board done to actually implement or try out some of the good ideas that people have? The gentleman that just spoke about fifteen-hour studies. We should address the issues that are raised legitimately about why more brown and black students can't get into Lowell, but not eliminate excellence. We should all be striving for excellence in our city in every endeavor. And I think it's a mistake to continue in this adversarial way. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Casey?
Hi, thank you. Uh, just like last time, this resolution is being rushed through. You haven't learned from your mistakes. To summarize the superintendent's arguments, it's too hard and would take too much work to switch back to merit-based admissions. Does this sound familiar to you? That was essentially the same argument that left parents in the lurch with no in-person, uh, school for most of the last school year. It is completely within reason to resume merit-based admissions if you're committed to doing it. You just don't want to. To quote the lady earlier, "All babies have a right to a merit-based admission." And that means not just the Black and Brown ones. It seems that only certain minorities are important to this board. It's talked like that continues, uh, to create divisiveness. Apparently, you only get support from certain members of the sport if you're the right minority race. Asians may comprise thirty-four percent of San Francisco, where six percent are Black. But nationally, Asians are only six percent of the entire population. So Asians are apparently a minority, just not in the Bay Area. We are immigrants. Our struggle and path to success when we move to America is stunted if we decide to come to the racially diverse Bay Area. We apparently don't need your help because we can succeed on our own.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshall may seem to imply that Lowell is a school that's only for one ethnic population. It is actually available to everyone. It is based on merit, not race.
Thank you. Hello, Anne?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, I'm Anne Shu. I am a parent of two kids in SFUSD High School, not Lowell. They are happy where they are, and I am happy for them. My issue with, uh, this resolution is that you're attacking merit. You are saying that Black and Brown students cannot get in by merit. What message does that send to them? You're insulting them. And just admitting more Black students doesn't mean that they are doing well. You are setting them up for failure if they are not prepared for the Lowell curriculum. To the superintendent's presentation, saying that it's impossible to revert to the old merit-based admissions policy for two thousand and twenty-two, based on the complicated and lengthy process. But hey, this is the twenty-first century, and we are in the heart of technology innovation in the world. There are many different ways to modify the old admissions process that leverages technology and lessens the labor-intensive parts. Carol Kosovar proposed a plan in line with that. The board should take the time to consider that and come up with other workable solutions. You are smart people. You can do it to achieve both merit and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Jiwei?
Hi. Uh, 听不听到啊?
听到你讲啊?
Okay, so I'm Jiwei, and, uh, I, as all of you know, Lowell is the, the brand of San Francisco, and we support equity, and, but that doesn't mean that we, um, we, we 我而家喺度翻译緊，sorry. So we, we support equity, but doesn't mean, uh, we will let Lowell be a, like, a supermarket. And we want, uh, have, we, we want different colored students, and, um, but we insist that we should select on a merit base. We are the public educator, which should have trained our students, uh, to, uh, excellent level. So I hope, um, the, the board can listen to the public comment and go back to the merit base, um, for Lowell. And I think, um, we should also take this accountable for our students, and we need excellent, excellence. We need, uh, ex, eh, sorry. I'm looking at the, my notes. We, we need excellence in, we, uh, students for our society. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Lisa? Lisa, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I still believe, um, merit, uh, I still believe the selection, Lowell enrollment ship based on merit base. For example, if we work very hard, but we, we lose our promotion, so this is very unfair. So this apply to the school's education system, too. I think it's very double standard. We believe in equity, but I think, uh, we welcome all different color to join on a merit base. This change is rushed to, the solution is rushed to, uh, undue process. So I think, um, this is, so as the, um, superintendent mentioned, we are, uh, we, we have to invest a lot of money and, and, um, resources to do the change. But I think this is also wasting taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Kevin?
Hello, uh, my name's Kevin Wallace, and I'm speaking in favor of reinstating the merit base now. The board that is half-being recalled caused this problem, and with all due respect to the superintendent, he needs to figure out how to do it faster and work harder and get it done. It's not a good excuse. It's too hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Mark? Oh, Mark? Mark, are you there?
I've, I've already spoken once before, if you're
All right. It says Momenyl, M O M E N Y L?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Um, yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, uh, I, I support what you're doing with Lowell. I think if people are honest with themselves, they'll understand that if you have the biggest high school in the district with all of these students with a strong appetite for these advanced courses, that's obviously going to impact advanced courses elsewhere. The administration at Burton or Wallenberg or wherever else, they can't create courses for six or seven or eight kids. And so I, I think it's difficult for people, but if you're, if you're honest with yourself, you see that having all of this desire in one building is going to impact what can be offered elsewhere. And if you just, you know, are honest with your heart and you think, is that fair for the kids at Burton or Wallenberg? They don't have the same access to advanced placement classes. It's just you, we can't fund schools that way. You can't create a course around three children. So, um, but I hear these, a lot of people are feeling that people are celebrating a smaller number of Asians, and I can see that that's painful, and I'm sorry that people feel that. That's not what people are celebrating.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, John? Is, I'm sorry, Mark?
Can you hear me?
Yes, did you, um?
I'm sorry, I'd like to address the four or five board members who were not being recalled in February. You're going to have a very tough time convincing the most tech-savvy city in the country that this process is too time-consuming. And the entire country knows you're just stalling. That's something that a middle schooler could get done quicker. There's many simple ways of measuring measure, merit: GPA cutoffs, essays, simplified testing, and the public has clearly offered to help you. Your voting records are under intense public scrutiny right now, so you need to ask yourself some questions tonight. Number one, do I really want to go down on record tonight, voting to violate a court order? Number two, will I want my voting record associated with the two or three outgoing members when my turn for recall comes up? And number three, do I really want to insult the voting public's intelligence by trying to convince them that we can't come up with a workable solution faster? Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan? Jonathan?
Hello, sorry.
Yeah.
And this is Jonathan.
The other person has call captions enabled. Please start speaking.
Handle carefully. Before you eliminate Lowell's status as an academic magnet school with minimum admissions requirements, we should have a full and honest debate about the pros and cons of having a school that attracts ambitious students from all corners of the city. The February ninth, Allison Collins' resolution on permanent lottery admissions was extremely questionable. I disagree with Collins that encouraging students to study is segregationist. I disagree with Collins that when Asian people study hard, that's white supremacy. I do not think racial diversity is the only kind of diversity that matters. But when admissions tests reveal racial disparities, I think we should address the root cause of those disparities and increase resources to those students who are falling behind, rather than just dumping them in, in the deep end, where, when they're not prepared for it. So I think Allison Collins' resolution was simplistic and biased and does not reflect the values of the city as a whole. As for this interim resolution for next year, please look at the schedule carefully before you approve it. Does the district really need six weeks to post an application? I don't think so. I, I don't think it, I simply don't think it's true that you have to schedule all the testing before receiving the applications. The, uh, you know, the website already explains that an enrollment counselor may contact parents to schedule a language assessment. There's no reason that an enrollment counselor can't schedule an assessment, just like the one that you already, always have been giving to Lowell applicants. Thank you.
Hello, Terrence?
Hi, thank you very much. Uh, I'm Terry Abad. I'm a Lowell alum from the class of nineteen seventy-six. You know, I- You know, it's really sad that we're here tonight, uh having to have a rather acrimonious discussion. Because this all could have been avoided. Uh if we think back to February ninth, uh if we had. If anybody besides Commissioners Lamb and Bogus had listened to Reverend Amos Brown as he pleaded with the board to allow forty days. So that he and other community groups could get together and discuss Lowell admissions policy. We wouldn't be here today at at the last minute trying to come up with a policy. So I I think that's just a shame. I will say um thank you to Superintendent Matthews for the fact that part of his preface to his resolution is. That he is committed to coming back to the school board in January with a timeline for open public discussion about the future of Lowell admissions. That's really important, no matter what happens tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello, Trin.
Uh yes, hi, my name is Trin Green and I'm part of the Lowell class of nineteen ninety two. Uh and an immigrant from Vietnam. Um I'd like to share that Lowell's academic rigor has given me excellent preparation for college and beyond. To destroy the merit-based admission is to deny opportunity to deserving kids who will benefit from Lowell's academics. Especially when they have no other options. So I would strongly suggest that you reincorporate merit-based admission. Meritocracy is not racism. The school is open to all races who can meet the entry requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Joya.
Hello, I am a parent of a junior at Lowell. What I would like to understand is why the BOE. Is ignoring the constituents, why we have rushed all these decisions. There was plenty of time to implement the fall twenty twenty two applications. They just keep saying there is no time. The judge has pointed out that the only reason you do not have time is because you did not do what it needed to do. There is already an admissions exam and I am really disappointed with Allison Collins. Um after she already attacked Lowell community with her anti-Asian racism. And she was banned from Twitter. She has already reposted the racist tweet that got her banned in the first place. Superintendent Matthews, you also said that you opted out of Lowell because of a racist environment. Why did you not try to fix this then when you became the superintendent? And is really Lowell like the, I don't see any issues being pointed out at other schools. You would think all the other schools are perfect. In S F U S D and Lowell is the only one with issues at this point, based on how all of you are behaving towards this high school. So I really request that you step back and really look at what the community is asking for. And reinstate merit-based admissions at Lowell, which serves all the students in San Francisco at this point. Thank you.
Hello, Iris.
Hi, my name is Iris Wong. I uh I'm a parent of three children in S F U S D. I pledged the board to resume the um to resume the Lowell enrollment policy immediately. Uh I think the resolution made on February ninth was a wrong decision. And uh actually, all 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 children of all colors deserve good education. But Lowell open to all colors, oh students of all colors, all ethnicities. And I don't know why you have to rush to change this policy. And this new policy divide the uh um divide the community even more. So I think um and this this policy shut the door to those who want to excel. So I want this policy to be resumed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, John.
Hi, um my name is John. I'm speaking on behalf of merit-based admissions. As a first generation Latino, I resent the BOE's paternalistic and racist implication. That my kids are in some sense racially inferior and need the BOE's help in getting into a good high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Marcia.
My name is Marcia Sample. And I oppose the superintendent's resolution to extend the interim Lowell admission policy for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. I was a new immigrant to our country of barely two years before I attended Lowell in nineteen eighty six. I'm very grateful for the excellent education that I received. And I wish to see the same opportunities available to other socially economic, socio socio-economically disadvantaged students like myself. Lowell has been a magnet school for many generations, existing not in violation of any state laws, but established specifically. To advance academics. And prepare students for higher education. Continuing a lottery system and admitting students who may not be academically prepared for a rigorous curriculum. Will harm them more than help them. I had classmates and friends who weren't prepared for Lowell. And flunking classes demoralize them for a very long time. Please let's not do that to the students who are already impacted by the challenges of the pandemic. Thank you.
Hello, Diane. Diane?
Can you hear me?
Yes, it's a little low, but speak up, please.
Okay. Hi, this is Diane with the Friends of Lowell Foundation. You are on the Board of Education because you want to help all students get the best education they can. Best is all about fit, not about prestige. Admission to Lowell High is not a golden ticket to a good life. After admission comes a daily grind of hours of homework, competing with the most academically advanced students of San Francisco. If you're admitting students who can't read or do math at grade level, who are truant, who don't know how to study or take notes, they're going to fail. That's what you're doing when you admit via lottery. You're removing the proof that students are ready. That safeguard exists to protect the students. An unprecedented number of freshman lottery admits are failing their classes. They're getting Ds and Fs at rates up to four times as high as students in other grades. Twenty percent are failing algebra. Failures lead to dropout. Instead of allowing them to flounder at a school they aren't prepared for, wouldn't it be best to have them attend a school that better fits their educational needs? Merit-based admissions is the best tool we have for sorting students into the educational program that aligns with the level. Let's go back to merit before we fail more students.
Hello, Angela. Angela? One more time, Angela, are you there? Okay. Hello, Fran.
Yes, this is Fran.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um I was a student at Lowell from nineteen sixty eight to nineteen seventy one. Felt I felt my education there was excellent, merit-based education is necessary. If you want to start to change things, things need to start in the elementary school with excellence, middle school, etc., etc., as far as I feel. Other areas are focused on like the arts, education, music and stuff, so we need to keep Lowell as a merit-based admissions. The people I met at Lowell and activities I was involved with have helped in a rich my entire life. Um I became a teacher myself due to my experience at Lowell. So I really firmly believe that Lowell should remain a merit-based school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, Mena Young.
Hi, this is Mena Young. Um I am a longtime San Franciscan. And I have two kids who uh who graduated from Lowell. And um they, it was their choice and I I'm very saddened that. Uh students nowadays don't have that choice. It's all about opportunities for students to realize their potential. That's what schools are for. Different students have different potentials and different interests and different environments would promote that. And if San Francisco has such a jewel as Lowell to promote certain kinds of academic environment of one. Then it's good, right? It's good to keep something that's popular. Why do you get rid of it? So keep the merit base and have to give the students a choice um which they deserve for their potential. And you can build other schools for different kinds of potentials. If that's what's good for students, then do it. Okay?
Thank you. Hello, Charmilla.
Hi.
You have an echo going on. I don't know if you have two devices on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, but there is an echo. Do you have multiple devices on? Charmilla, can you hear me? Charmilla? Oops. Charmilla, are you there?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, are you all set? Charmilla?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead and speak.
Hello?
Uh she can't, she can't hear me. Um Charmilla, you can go ahead and speak.
Yes, I'm I'm a former public school parent and I have recently switched my kids out of S F U S D. But what struck me is that almost all um private schools or independent schools have offer some form of admissions criteria, whether it's merit or otherwise. And it really saddens me that S F U S D not only is denying their kids any sort of opportunity for choice. But is this removing anything or even the minimal that existed in the past? So I really urge you to, you know, offer some sort of privilege to S F U S D. That otherwise parents would um definitely leave your system. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Angela? Angela? Angela, are you there? Okay. Hello, John?
Uh good evening. I'm John Trisvenia, Lowell High School graduate, former president of the Alumni Association. Also former president of the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Fund. I've spent my career fighting for the rights of educational opportunity. Uh in bilingual education, higher education. Uh tonight, uh if you are getting rid of academic admissions at Lowell for a second year, that's not the way to advance equal educational opportunity. Uh we must work to elevate all all kids. Uh the Lowell Alumni Association has offered to you Superintendent Matthews and to each board member for at least for the last three years. Uh working with with parents at the parents and students at the middle schools and candidate and candidate aid to assist in their preparation. We have never gotten an answer from anybody uh at at the school board level. So this lack of response. Uh is really indicative of a failure to prepare kids uh to go to Lowell. So you may be opening up the door to a school named Lowell, but you're denying all kids academic excellence at 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 school level. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Angela, we'll try one more time. Angela, are you there? Angela? Okay, actually, that concludes public comment, Vice President Malaga, with thirty-four seconds left.
We are doing a good job on that tonight. Thank you, Jetson, for managing public comment tonight. Appreciate all of you who have uh come tonight to voice your thoughts and concerns around this issue. We really appreciate everyone's participation in this process and we understand it's not a um, it's not a easy, it's not an easy one and um. We just encourage everyone to continue to stay tuned in and continue to reach out and uh we're gonna work on our end to continue working with all of you. In our community to be able to find a solution and or a path that is right for our kids in this school district. And so um I want to appreciate, you know, the public and all the families, parents, educators, alumni who showed up tonight. Uh from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. Um I do want to now turn it over to a discussion amongst our colleagues and the board. And so let me go ahead and see. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open up to our colleagues, student delegates, if folks have any um comments or questions on the item tonight. I see uh student delegate Lamb.
Yeah, I wanted to hop in here and um I guess giving my perspective as a Lowell student myself. Um I am going to speak on admissions now, but also looking towards the future. I'm in support of the superintendent's proposal to um suspend merit-based admissions. Uh to Lowell for this school year or for the next school year. I think that implementing the process now, as the superintendent has said, is going to be a very time-consuming process. And I think that it's going to be a little rough for students. I'm just thinking about how I would feel, I'm not currently a middle schooler, but as a middle schooler that has already gone through the semester. Um thinking that Lowell would not have these extra admissions requirements and then having to prepare for. The test scores for the Lowell essay. Um and I just feel like it would be. It would be unjust to do that to our students and throw that uncertainty. And I know that there's an argument saying that students want this and I'm sure that there are students that would like merit-based missions to be re-implemented. But I also want to give a voice to those that just aren't prepared or won't have the resources or the support to prepare if we were to reinstate this this late into the year. Um the Lowell admissions test, for example, people spend months studying for that when it was implemented back. Uh when it was last implemented. And the people that have the resources to to get tutoring or to take time after school to study for that test. Will study for that test, but those that don't have those resources right now. And those that anticipated that they would not need to be studying, won't have those resources and won't have as much of a chance to success. And so that's why I'm saying that we should, we should keep the lottery admissions for the incoming school year. Um while also bringing light to the clause in the superintendent's resolution where we would revisit this discussion in January. Because I think it's super important that we do revisit this. Um to those that are advocating that we go back to what we had, I want to say that what we had was not great either. Um because. Because as a Lowell student, it changed every single year that I was enrolled. It changed the year that I was applying from the Lowell test to the Sback test. It changed the year I was a freshman to include to include more band three schools within the band three part of the admissions. And it continues to change because we realized that there's a problem with how we're running the admissions. And I think that in order to facilitate a long discussion about how we can fix this, if we want to go with some sort of admissions criteria and have a meaningful discussion, we can't go back to what we had with the test scores or with GPA or with the essay, because as we can see from the last four years, it wasn't working. And that's why I'm looking towards January for more meaningful discussion, because I feel like that this is not just a Lowell-centered issue, even though it centers around Lowell. Because it involves every single high school in the city. Like, why aren't people considering those as viable options for their students? And that's a question that we need to be asking ourselves. But also, I don't truly believe that it's merit-based, because it's not all equal. There's a lot more to test scores, to grades, to outstanding extracurriculars, which you need for the Lowell admissions essay and application. Because our city inherently, if you grow up on one side of the city, then you're getting a completely different experience than some that are growing up on another side. It has to go with socio-economic background, it has to do with the supports you get from kindergarten. And I think that we need to evaluate how we're supporting our students at the elementary school level, the middle school level, and the high school level, while also evaluating this admissions process. And so I think it's just going to take a lot more time. And I know that we keep saying that, but I would love to have more time to actually meaningfully engage the public in January, while also giving some certainty to our middle school students that are applying right now. That's kind of all I've got to say. I have a bunch of no cards written down. And I might come back to some things, but those are sort of my thoughts as a Lowell student right now and also as someone who has gone through the process over the last four years.
Thank you, Student Delegate Lamb. That was, thank you for the feedback. That was very helpful. Let's go ahead and I've got a couple of hands up. Commissioner Bogus?
Thank you. Thank you, Student Delegate Lamb. Really appreciate your comments and your words. I think for me, I just wanted to, I think, start off by saying I definitely want to just say I believe the superintendent, I mean, the staff, when they kind of explain the reasoning behind the resolution. I just feel like that's really important, because I feel like that has been called in question a lot. And I just feel like for me, it's very, it seems like an honest assessment of what we're dealing with and trying to overcome with all the different challenges that we're struggling with in this district. I think also just to kind of lift up that this vote today isn't a final decision about the admissions process, right? And that this is actually something that is more kind of a procedural administrative action than like a directive from the board that's kind of set long-term policy. I think, I also want to just lift up that I feel like it was very troubling to hear from the public, people making generalizations about our students in ways that I feel like were very harmful and wrong, and it have been used by other people to make very kind of hateful and derogatory statements and claims. Even if those aren't your intentions, just those things being connected just makes it such a dicey thing. And I just think it's really important for us to remember our commitment to supporting all students and really seeing them all as being successful and being able to achieve. You know what I mean? I think just like lifting up like the amount of time that we've talked about Lowell versus schools like Hilltop or Ida B. Wells or Downtown and just, you know, how much more love and support those schools need as well, from the district, from the public. I mean, really how we can kind of collectively have more conversations to do that. I am going to vote no on the resolution though, because I do feel like with these types of decisions, it's really important for us to have more public dialogue, even if that public dialogue won't necessarily resolve the situation. I just, I, it is important for people to feel heard and to be able to express things. I'm in a public forum. That's not just a board meeting. We can have more two-way dialogue and really, you know, start to hash these things out amongst ourselves in a different way than we can in this space. So I just wanted to share my thoughts on it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lamb?
Thank you. And thank you to Student Delegate Lamb. I think it's so imperative that we hear from our students directly and our young people, especially who have gone through our public schools throughout their childhood, frankly. I think first and foremost, I appreciate Superintendent putting forward his proposal and I similarly, you know, understand and believe. Thank you, Commissioner Bogus, you really named that about the limitations right now that is a district that we're facing and also our superintendent and what as our CEO, what he and his team are charged with every day. You know, just to remind folks that, you know, we are still living in a pandemic and Omicron is here now too with our next wave of variants. And really tackling what the education recovery is for our students PK to twelve and what we're seeing the health and wellness of our students every day, as well as our staff. So I just want to acknowledge and the budget implications that we have right now and the budget fiscal cliff that we're dealing with just this past Tuesday. And the budget planning that we submitted to the California Department of Education. There are some significant challenges that this district is facing along with a workforce crisis. So, you know, as we're having tonight's discussion about Lowell and the plans for next school year, twenty-two, twenty-three, this policy is for the lottery for this upcoming school year. You know, I want to name that, and I've said it before, I support an academic magnet school. I also am a true champion for equity as well. And to be able to see the student diversity increase in just one year is also very, you know, it is a great start. And we know there's still much work to happen, not only at Lowell but at our high schools, and I said this as well. What happens at Lowell is part of a bigger ecosystem. It is not a standing school on its own. It is part of a comprehensive high schools of seventeen schools, other seventeen schools. And I also want to name that, you know, in addition to the students who go to Lowell, there are thousands of students who don't go to Lowell that are in high school. And I hear from them. I hear from those high school students. Remember, I have two children who are in high school now. And I hear from their peers, I hear from students when I go visit other schools, that at times this narrative is like they're lesser than. And it is completely, I think, of what as a district we would want our children to feel like, right? We are creating joy, we are creating love and excellence, educational excellence, and we have a long way to go. The fact that, you know, every year, you know, I have students calling, contacting me, asking for more course offerings at their high school, but they just cannot have it. And at times the district has a particular answer of like, well, we have dual enrollment, which I certainly, you know, support for City College. But we all know that funding is also different now too in how it is supported. And so I think the systemic systems problem that we have to solve is going to be beyond tonight's vote. It is going to be something that I'm committed to tackling that, you know, otherwise we will continue to have, you know, I think, very either polarized or linear discussions. And so I'm really committed to looking at a more, you know, inclusive admissions process while looking at the academic magnet profile of students. And furthering, you know, how is it that we can create greater educational opportunities access for students, for all of our students and are continuing to seek that? I mean, right now you have hundreds, maybe thousands of high school students are receiving college admissions now or over in the next month. You know, so I just think that, you know, there's a lot of work to do. I'm open to looking at creative solutions. I absolutely think that we need to open up dialogue with community that is truly an opportunity for active listening, even when it is painful and hard. We have to come together as a community and as a city further. So I just wanted to share these few remarks and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lamb. Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank everyone who made comments tonight, because I think this is a really important debate and discussion over kind of what, you know, this idea of merit and what it means and its role in our public school system. And I totally agree with Commissioner Lamb that this, that we need to have this discussion in a respectful way, in a way that brings people together, even when we don't agree. I think, I think it's a really, really important conversation, maybe especially when we don't agree. It's important to have it in a way that's, that where people can really listen. And I also really appreciate what Commissioner Lamb said about high schools and the larger high school ecosystem. You know, I, as an educator with over two decades of experience, deeply believe that the job of our public school system is not to sort students into who's worthy and who's not worthy, but rather it's to respect the inherent worth and dignity of every single child and to educate every single young person to their highest potential. And as Student Delegate Lamb kind of mentioned, I think a lot of what we call sort of merit and earning things, it is in fact the result of like life circumstances and access to resources. I mean, one of the issues I raise with around Lowell actually has to do with access of, for example, English language learners. And I've told this story with a couple of you. I actually know a young man who graduated from Lincoln High School in twenty-twenty, who's one of the most brilliant math students that I've encountered in my over two decades of time as an educator in SFUSD, total math nerd, as he was a senior at Lincoln, he was taking calculus at City College, but also just like a really brilliant, deep mathematical thinker. And he was an immigrant from Mexico who arrived here as a, I think, a freshman in high school. And so he just didn't even have the opportunity to be at Lowell. But also Lowell students didn't have the opportunity to learn from him in their math class. And so I just think there's issues, and I'm not, I don't know that there's a simple answer to that, but I just want to raise it as kind of a, as an example of, as we think about kind of how our system has worked for a long time. I think there are certain things that just don't get, don't get examined. And I also think, you know, it is true that the admissions lottery resulted in a dramatic increase in black student enrollment, nearly tripling Latino-Latino student enrollment, increasing by seventy percent, almost doubling. And bringing both groups much closer, much closer to representing their share of SFUSD. The only significant decline in ethnic group was among white students in terms of the impact, at least this year. So I think that's important data. I also, like Commissioner Lamb, I support this, I support the idea of schools having unique strengths and characters and this idea of an academic magnet school. I'm not convinced that we can't have an academic magnet school with a lottery admission system. I don't necessarily think those two things are incompatible. If the character of the school is very clear and the expectations and the rigor of the curriculum, none of those things were changed by the lottery admissions. And it's interesting to me, I don't think that the character of a school depends on excluding people from it. I do think there's a place for choice, like I said, and for schools having unique strengths and characters. But if there's a school has a unique character and a student wants to opt in, I think, I think we in general ought to allow that as public system. And if there's too many applicants, if more people want it, then a lottery seems to me to be a fair way of doing that. I'm open to other possibilities. I'm not, but I just want to sort of be transparent with folks about my thinking as a board member. I also, and I want to keep listening, right? And I really appreciate, I think, a really productive conversation with some members of the Lowell Alumni Association last week. I want to keep engaging with you all. Anyone in the Lowell community, I would welcome the opportunity to talk with you. And I want to keep listening and learning as well. The only other thing I want to mention is there, this hasn't come up, and there is this issue around the legality or potential illegality of academic admissions. And I do think that's just something for the public to know that we also, we're going to be faced as we, not for, you know, as we, in the new year, have this discussion and debate, which will be more in-depth, of this question of what actually is legal under state law. And so I also think there, you know, so there's this philosophical question, but there's also a question of what are the constraints that we're in. And I just want to put that on the radar for everybody that that's something we're going to need to think about moving forward as well. But again, I just, I just really appreciate all the comments and engagement from the public and look forward to continuing the conversation as well in the new year for, as look beyond the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander. Commissioner Collins?
Thank you. I don't have much to add. I think I do really want to lift up Student Delegate Lamb's comments. And just appreciate her leadership and her voice on this board and in her school community. And so I just wanted to say that. I think when folks say, you know, we have to have a, like a, this is a larger discussion. And it is true, Lowell, we have a portfolio of high schools. We should be having this larger discussion. Part of the purpose of the equity audit, and I'm grateful that we're going through this process finally, is that we will have outside help in analyzing our data, analyzing program availability across our portfolio of high schools, analyzing other policies. And this is district-wide. And as folks say, it isn't just about Lowell, it is about our entire district. And so out of that equity audit, we'll be able to see, I mean, how, one of the advantages that Lowell has has nothing to do with the selective enrollment, but it has to do with the fact that it's one of the largest high schools in the city. And because they've had selective enrollment, they've been able to kind of cream and crop students. So they have enough of a population to offer the number of AP classes that they have, and they also have more resources just by, just by size to offer more languages and extracurriculars than some of the smaller high schools. And that also goes for, you know, when people talk about the math sequence and the ability to take multiple pathways, larger high schools tend to have more ability to offer multiple options. And even so, kids don't always get what they sign up for, what they want. So just because you want something also doesn't mean that we can offer it to every single person. But I do think it's worth having a really, like, honest conversation about what's available. Because if you go to Wallenberg, which is also an excellent school, or Academy, or, you know, one of the smaller high schools, you have less access to taking multiple pathways in math. And if that is something we want to give all students, then I think that that is something that we should invest in and support. And that's also true with our AP coursework, our concurrent enrollment. We have, you know, arts programming, all of those things should be available, not just at one school. And I do think it's important for us to examine that entire district. So I think we're going to get that information from the equity audit. And I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the work of staff in putting this together. And I also wanted to highlight, you know, there's misinformation, very specifically Lowell is not listed as a magnet school in, on the Department of Education. And you can look it up on the school directory. There are schools that are listed as alternative high schools. Lowell is listed as a traditional high school, and it does not offer a different program. So we do not have an academic magnet in our district. And so that, I think, needs to just be clear. Additionally, I also wanted to address this idea that there's a narrative that changing enrollment in some ways is excluding Asian students. I've heard people mention the Chinese Exclusion Act. And I've also just heard this general idea that without selective enrollment, we are creating, we are actually in some ways undermining or harming hard-working immigrant families that see Lowell as a path to opportunity. And I just want to point out, we're looking at data this year on enrollment. And not only do we have more African-American and Latinx students in the school, but where we see really huge gains is in students that are low income, immigrant students, and also students with disabilities. And that also, you know, applies to Asian-American and specifically Chinese-American families. So I know as a ninth-grade English teacher, that, you know, if you have a family that comes in, you know, to the United States in eighth grade, their chances of applying to Lowell were like kind of nonexistent, because they didn't have grades. You know, writing essays in and of itself is a barrier for students that don't speak English as a primary language. for students that don't speak English as a primary language, if they don't have help writing essays. And, and so it becomes, as I, as Student Delegate Lamb said, it becomes an issue when you have some of these factors. It prevents families that are not as well-resourced or not connected or don't know the system. Those families have in the past been prevented, and many of them are immigrant families, low-income families, and, and families with students who have disabilities. And they are just as hardworking as anyone. And so I do hope that we can also have those conversations as well as just, you know, how do we make sure that all students feel supported? And also feel, I think this is a bigger conversation, district-wide, students that want to do more and excel, I don't think we've really had honest conversations about how we support their achievement. And so as a result, parents have felt like they had to basically, you know, muscle their way or navigate their way into specialized programs like Little Pockets. And I think all children, children have the opportunity to excel. And a lot of times, because we don't support teachers enough, teachers end up getting overwhelmed and with a lack of support, they, they don't have the ability to really differentiate. And we talked a lot about differentiation a while back, and we kind of have stopped that conversation. And that's because it requires resources, requires time for, for teachers to plan, and it also requires experienced teachers, which we are losing right now because of all the stress and because of the lack of support in our schools. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can also talk about differentiation and, and supporting our high achievers all through the system. And I'm very excited to talk about that with any parents who want to talk about it, because I know that it can be done. My kids have experienced it, but it is not something that, it takes resources and it takes, and it takes, you know, intention to happen. So thank you for allowing me time.
Anyone else want to, Student Delegate Lamb?
Yeah, I wanted to hop in here and wanted to go back to Commissioner Alexander's comment about having an academic lottery system. I agree, I actually think that going into January, this is sort of what I'm looking at. I think that we can have an academic school while maintaining a lottery system because of the culture and the expectation. I, I want to remind people that you have to opt into Lowell, which means you have to make a conscious decision that you are taking on what is perceived to be the expectations of what Lowell is. You have to mark that down on your application when you sign up for high schools, right? You, I remember doing this, and I'm sure many Lowell students or people that apply to Lowell can think about it and remember is the conversation that you have with your parents, with yourself, about whether or not you're ready to take on what Lowell throws at you because of its reputation. Are you ready for the stress, the three hours of homework every night, the extracurriculars and the competition? And so you can keep that, that rigor, albeit I would like it to be a healthy rigor, and we can have that conversation about mental health at Lowell at another time. But you can have that rigor and you can have that culture and you can maintain that because it ultimately is the students that bring that. And you have to opt into Lowell, the same way that you have to opt into other high schools. For example, my second choice was Galileo, because at the time I wanted to go into computer science. And Galileo has an amazing computer science pathway at its school. And I guess that leads me to another point then, about high schools in general. We often have this conversation about Lowell having so many AP classes or taking up resources and this and that, or there's no other options when there are. There really are. Our high schools offer all sorts of specialized programming for students that want to explore more. For example, the teacher pathway at Lincoln, or like I mentioned, the Galileo Computer Science Pathway, or at Balboa, which is like right across the street from me, the Environmental Science Pathway, right? And we have these things. And we also have a bunch of AP classes at Lowell, that's true. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we can all talk about it so that we can share these different resources. I, I know that I had this conversation with Commissioner Alexander, Agnes and I both, because we come from two very different school backgrounds, but both want to take these high-level courses. Talked about maybe offering like a night school option where we can have people teach AP classes. Students from other schools can join. And same for Lowell, because Lowell actually doesn't have pathways, albeit we have a lot of resources, but we don't have specialized pathways at our school. And I'm sure there are some students that would love to take, you know, specialized computer science classes at Galileo, for example, or workshop at Washington. And I'd like, I know that we're facing a budget crisis, and I know that it's very, it's me being really optimistic, but I think that that's something that we should aim towards. So I'm echoing what a lot of commissioners have already said already about looking at our larger high school ecosystem as a whole, as a solution to this sort of Lowell issue. And I also wanted to address some things about people bringing up our freshmen struggling at Lowell as student class president, but also someone who goes to Lowell, all students are struggling right now. And it's not even just the students. I mean, we just came out of a pandemic, so we did a lot of self-study at home. And also teachers are getting back into the classroom. And so the grades from this last period, which really finals ended today, are more reflective of us learning, our learning loss over the pandemic and less so of like our academic capabilities or the academic capabilities of our freshmen right now. And I just wanted to name that out there, that I, I really, and I'm going to try to wrap it up here, but one of the things that irked me, and I talked about this earlier, I was the first class or part of the first class to come into Lowell on S-Back or the California Test Corps admission, and not the Lowell test. And one of the things that I faced as a freshman were upperclassmen saying things like, this is why we test you into Lowell when I would make a mistake, or when one of my peers would make a mistake, which albeit maybe it was just in the environment that I was in, but people looking down on these next classes of freshmen as they come in with different admissions requirements. I don't want that to happen to our freshmen, and I'm saying that right now as someone who is a student leader on campus. That's one of, one of the main concerns that I have and one of the things that I strive to protect them against is this, oh, you got in through lottery? Oh, you got in through, I don't know, band three, for example? A lot of times people are like, oh, you're a band three kid? I don't want that. If you get into Lowell, then you get into Lowell, and that's that. And I just wanted to squash that out here right now with some of the stuff that's been said about public commenters. If you get into Lowell, you're a Lowellite, you're a cardinal, I guess, and we accept you for who you are. It doesn't make you less than if you came in through admissions, if you came in through band two or band three. It doesn't matter. And I'm hoping that that sets the record straight, right here and then from students and not from parents and teachers. Yeah, thank you for letting me go on about that.
Got it. You, you can go on like that anytime you want to. Well, as a native and an alumni of the school district, when I came to Lowell, representing schools on the east side, you know, we were always just in competition. So every time somebody brings up Lowell, like, ah, whatever, you know, Mac is here all day, you know? But, uh, you know, to the, to the core of it, you know, I've always had a, a respect for Lowell. You know, they, they are, it's a really good school, you know, they do really good work there. And, um, you know, so I have a lot of respect for what they produce at the school, you know, just, just, just off of, off of that, you know? And, um, you know, for me, you know, walking through this process, first and foremost, you know, wanting to honor the superintendent and his, uh, his plan and what he wants to do in terms of like what makes sense for our school district and how we move forward, and that to me matters a lot, right? What makes sense for us as a school district moving forward? What processes do we need to put in place so that, one, all families are heard? Two, we're doing the right thing for all students? And three, you know, making sure that we are providing academic excellence, you know, throughout the whole entire pre-K, all the three, two fourteen, uh, school district we have. So, you know, so I think all of that is important. And, um, but I want to, I also want to say that, you know, there is something about Lowell, you know, just growing up in the city and just knowing it's academic excellence. And, you know, sitting down with alumni folks, you know, good peoples, man, good folks, Terrence and all those guys, good peoples, people that just really care about the school, right? And what I heard from the folks was, you know, this thing around, you know, academic excellence, how do we do that? And I just really want to echo and appreciate some of the comments tonight about my colleagues, Commissioner Alexander, Commissioner Lamb, and Student Delegate Lamb, in terms of like, how do we do that? We can, we can get there, right? We can get there, you know, with a method that is, you know, stay compliant, you know? That just honors the rules, right? Like, how do we paint within the lines and create these kind of, you know, programs and institutions in our school? And, you know, I'm, I'm one hundred percent committed to making sure that Lowell continues to be a highly academic schools within the boundaries of following the books, right? And I, and I'm one hundred percent committed to that. The thing that I do have a lot of hope around is it does have a strong culture, right? The Alumni Association at the school is very, very robust, you know, very active, right? My auntie's a part of that group, you know, I got family members who are part of that group, you know? And I do trust that those folks will show up for their school, you know, because they care a lot about it, right? And so I do think that, you know, the energy that is, you know, around the current efforts, you know, will continue whether, you know, they, they will continue, and I do have a lot of faith and hope in that. And I do want to close it down by saying, you know, for me, you know, the focus is, you know, the work that we have at, at hand, but also to, to really pay attention to the kids that are currently in the school today. Like, they need our help today, you know, like Student Delegate Lamb mentioned, you know? All of the students are struggling. So we have to rally around, you know, how do we land, you know, on this process in addition to continuing to support the, the students that are currently at the school and need our support, right? Like, all of them need our support. If they're failing, if they're not failing, if they're doing well, mental health, like, they're going to need all of our support, you know? So, um, so I just want to say that, but I again want to just like really thank the families, you know, the partners, the alumni, you know, the community for just helping us walk through this process. And I appreciate the dialogue with our colleagues as well. I want to go ahead and like wrap this up. I think-
President Lopez has her hand up.
Okay, I see that hand up. President Lopez, you want to share?
Hi, thank you, Superintendent Matthews. It won't be long. I, of course, I'm supporting the resolution that the superintendent is putting forward, giving the logistical, in the impossibility of implementing it for twenty-two, twenty-three. And I do encourage any future process to continue to uphold that, that protection that we need when we're having these discussions, specifically with the various comments I heard tonight. And I've said this before, this, this process is painful because people are saying harmful things. And we can, we're all saying we're open to having these discussions. And it, and I applaud my colleagues for having these invitations and opening up these opportunities. But we need to recognize the, the way things are being phrased and the language people choose to use is creating more harm. And so whatever process we, we go through in the future for the following years, twenty-three and beyond, I'm just hoping that we continue to uphold that and recognize that every time this conversation comes up, there will be harm if we allow it.
Was, was that your comments, President Lopez?
Yep, I know how I'm voting.
All right, thank you. So, um, let's see. Is this our last board meeting? No, we're doing B and G next week. I was going to wrap it up with a song, but no, no, I'm not going to do that. Any more questions, comments from staff? Colleagues, again, thank you so much to the public. Continue to stay tuned in with us, continue to support us in this. We will continue to work with you all. Thank you all again, Superintendent Matthews and the staff for helping out with this process. And we look forward to, you know, seeing you all at our next board meeting and hearing from you all in terms of how to support. Vince, I see you thinking hard. Are you trying to say so?
Just making, just making sure you're about to take a vote.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that.
It sounded like you were wrapping up, so.
Yep, read my mind. Justin, can we get a roll call on this, please?
Yes, on the superintendent's resolution, Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus. Commissioner Collins.
Yes, and we're supposed to start with student representatives.
Oh, my apologies, you are correct. Let me, let me restart. Thank you for- Student Delegate Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, one moment.
You're on mute.
No, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the other student delegate's name right now.
Student Delegate Liang is not present.
I was going to say, I didn't see her. Okay, so great. Well, I'll start over. Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bogus.
No.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
No.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Maliga.
No.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
That's four eyes, passes.
All right, thank you all again. Appreciate you guys, and we will see you at our next board meeting.